All right, I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Friday, July 16th at 12:04 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Schenk, present. Chaz, you're muted.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, present.
And Veronica Kell, present. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded. It should be live on Channel 9, and it will be posted after on the YouTube channel. For chairman's additions or deletions, I do have a few here. Under 1.4, the minutes for July 9th are only half done, so we will move those to July 20th for approval. I will post that agenda this afternoon. So, but we do have the minutes of July 2nd. Same is true for the executive session minutes. What I'm thinking, we will do those on June 20, on July 27th. So that will be moved to then.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, the other changes are 2.1, the interim advisory group meeting. I had planned to kind of do this during the meeting, and on rethinking, we posted yesterday to have it on Monday. So the interim advisory group is going to be meeting during our noon meeting on Monday, the 19th of July. It will be the only item on the agenda, and if you are on the advisory group, the meeting will be in-person in the room for the advisory group. There is a Zoom link because it's an open meeting. That's going to be a little bit tough unless our owl arrives. So, in any event, the, the meeting is, I may remove the Zoom link and make it an in-person only, but it's the advisory group, and if all three of us are there, it has to be posted as a public meeting.
I, I, as you said earlier, I'm out of town, so I can zoom in, but I cannot.
Okay, then I will keep the Zoom link.
Zoom, I have to.
All right, yeah, I will keep the Zoom. Chaz, that's probably true for you, too. I might be the only one in person in the room. So, okay, so, just so everyone knows that 2.1 is eliminated from today's agenda, but it, it is moved as the only agenda item on Monday, July 19th. All right, so those are the only things that I have for today's agenda. Joe and Chaz, do either of you have anything?
No, I'm good.
I'm all set.
All right, so moving to 3.1, appointments. Do I have a motion to appoint Jessica Consalvo as Conservation Agent effective July 16th?
Before I do the motion, are we approving, are we going to approve minutes for July 2nd?
Oh, oh, thank you. Yes, I did additions and deletions, and then I moved on, didn't I? Yes. Is there a motion, thank you very much, to approve the minutes of July 2nd? I've already read them and written them, so.
I make a motion that we approve minutes for July 2nd, 2021.
I, I second that.
Okay, so Chaz Sexton-Duranian move, and Joe Schenk second. Are there any comments on them?
I didn't see it.
I put, I put my comments in right in the, right in there, so if we're all good with what we have, then we can just move it into the, the approve file, and then I'll take it to post.
Okay, so I will move the, I will move the doc, doc X.
Yep.
To the approved, well, I'll move it into the meeting minutes folder, and, and then you can PDF it and put it into the approved.
Correct.
All right, two minutes folder. All right, vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of July 2nd?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right. So now, moving on to 3.1.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Jessica Consalvo as Conservation Agent effective July 16th, contingent on a Corey check and a medical exam with a one-year probationary period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I, I would just say that we did check the references. They were put in SharePoint yesterday afternoon, I believe, so they were all excellent, and I really, well, anyway, I have nothing else on that, so we should vote. All in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
And we're just confirming.
Welcome aboard, Jessica.
Welcome, Jessica. Go ahead, Joe.
This is for the 20-hour position, is that correct?
No, it is a 15-hour position. There is no 20-hour position. There's a 19-hour position of Administrative Assistant. I probably didn't put that on here, did I?
We may want to just amend that vote and just say for the 15-hour position.
Well, this isn't a Conservation Agent, and the other position that's open is a Conservation Admin.
Correct.
They're two different positions.
So what I'll be doing is I'll be sending an offer letter that will go out on Monday to her, and should she accept, we can arrange through Misty for the Corey check and the pre-employment physical, and figure and plan a start date for her. I would, should she accept, I would want to discuss an onboarding process separate from what we've already put on paper and discussed with the department heads, but to, so that the other people in town, the other employees can meet her, and so that the board can meet her. So, we should, I'll put it on an agenda for next week to discuss that.
All right, thank you.
After we hear back from her. All right. Moving on to 3.2, is there a motion to appoint the three individuals to the Cemetery and Parks Department as temporary summer employees?
Madam Chair, may I ask, we, there, there's a couple of questions. Can we sort out the couple of questions first before we go to a motion on this?
Okay.
Roger, you want to, I guess, the, the position, from what I understand, and Roger, if I misspeak, please, please point that out to me. These are temporary seasonal on-call employees?
Correct, and they'll be here beyond 2021. Right, yeah.
What does that mean, Roger? Does that mean that they're, they're on-call all year?
Yes, yes, Veronica, yeah, because we do what, aerials, shovel sidewalks, and things like that, so.
So this isn't just summer help?
Correct, right.
And I guess, I don't know if this is the place for the discussion, what does that do as far as benefits go?
As long as we don't go beyond a certain amount of hours for any length of time, it doesn't trigger any benefits. This is practice of the department, yeah.
So these are not temporary summer employees, these are temporary?
On-call.
You know, we've had so many different, you know, intermittent, on-call, temporary, it's just kind of, I don't think it's ever really been ironed out as to a certain definition.
And these are not non-union positions, correct?
Non-union, non-benefited, correct.
Benefited, right?
Yeah, no benefits, Joe.
So how do we do this appointment?
So I, I would just say that, well, I can, I can make a motion, and you guys can discuss whether or not we need to amend it or not. How about that?
That sounds good.
Okay. I move to appoint the following individuals as temporary seasonal on-call employees for the Cemetery and Parks Department. Subject to a Corey check and a medical exam, Jeremiah Ford, David Baldwin, John Christopher Jones.
Is there a second?
Second.
I, that sounded.
Good.
Yeah, reasonable to me. I, I might have amended it to say, non-union, non-benefited, part-time. Do we need to put that in there, or is that part of the offer?
Roger, do we need to put that in, or are we going to be covered?
You get it, you got to kind of stay away from the part-time term or clause, because there is actually a part-time term and clause in, in the Policies and Procedures Manual. That's why we try to stay away from that verbiage of part-time. You know, temporary intermittent always seems to do the job. I just, we've always stayed away from the part-time verbiage because of that.
All right, appoint as temporary intermittent seasonal on-call employees. I added intermittent to the motion.
Can we get, can we do a little longer?
What?
Can we get it a little longer?
You mean the motion itself, or do you mean?
What we call the guys, the employees.
Temporary intermittent seasonal on-call.
We got them covered.
So, all right.
So, I'll, well, if you have a motion to amend, Madam Chair, then I'll second that motion, and we'll vote on the motion, motion to amend, and then we can vote on the.
Well, do we need the intermittent, or are we good with just temporary seasonal on-call?
I think that temporary seasonal on-call is enough to.
So I withdraw my amendment, then?
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Schenk, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So the motion passes, it is unanimous.
There you go, Roger. Thank the, the gentleman for us.
I will. Thank you. Thank you for everything you guys have done. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Moving, moving on to 5.1.1, 5.1 Town Administration Updates and Reports, 5.1.1 Guardian IT Updates. Chaz, that is you.
Um, so, I guess I can report that we have Conservation as, Conservation Agent workstation is set up. They are set up with a desktop system with a telephone that's going to be exclusively for them. I also have the Administrative Assistant in the Conservation Department set up. That is all, both of those positions are ready to go. All we need to do is put a person in the position so that they can call Guardian and get their passwords, so they're all ready to go. We also made some changes upstairs that in land use, they had moved around to be in compliance with a six-foot social distancing, so they're moving back to their original spot, so we had Guardian go and take care of all of that. The, the other information that I wanted to talk about, we can cover in the executive session, but outside of that, that's all I had really for Guardian.
I will just say that the documents we talked about last week and the week before for, were distributed at the Department Head Meeting on Tuesday, and I have received back quite a few, and so I am going to put them together, and Chaz, I'll put them on the high, high table where the warrant is. There is a warrant to be signed this week, both of them, so please come in and, and do that. And I will put them there, the, the inventory forms.
Okay.
So that you can take a look at that.
Good, and I've been receiving some as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were either to email them to you, I believe, or to, if they handwrote, to slip them in the selectman box, so I have some of those.
Okay.
That's all I have. Anything else? All right, then, let's, moving on to finances, 5.1.2, the CARES Act COVID Funds Report. I just want to say that I've been looking through that. The town was appropriated approximately $830,000. Of that, we have, there was a report, the state contacted us a week ago and said that we, they have not received anything from us recently, and so I, I went looking to see what there was. I asked the state to provide me with the reports that they did have, and the one that they gave me that was wrote most recent was from 12/30/2020, and there was a request for $264,000 plus or minus, which we did receive, might have been 260. I, I'm not pulling up the papers here. And I did contact Laurie. She said that there was a March statement put in. It could be that it has not bubbled up yet with the state, that they have not yet processed it. So what I'm doing is researching that, and at the same time, it is possible for a town to have a consultant do the CARES Act piece. I've been reading the DLS accounting bulletins, and there's a specific way that the accounting needs to be done, and it really adds a lot to a town accountant's job to do that. I, I will say that we do have in place all the funds that we should have for revenue and expenditures, and I'm in the process of seeing what was in there and how expenditures were recorded from the 1st of January until now, so that we can prepare the report that's due and request additional funding, and also looking at what has not been recorded that could be recorded from that time period, in particular, March to now. So, there's that. There is all, there is also the possibility that you can have a consultant, did I say that already, that is covered through the CARES Act funds. So, I, I did reach out to one company, the one that Ashby is using for that. Terry gave me the name of that company, but I haven't heard back yet. Again, I've, this has only been in the past week. I think it was Thursday of last week that we got the query about, hey, you have funds on the table, you know, submit a report. So, I reached out to one, but I haven't heard back. There was one that came through today, Strategic Solutions, and I think that was the name that Jared had given me for a possible company that does that. And then, I, I think I'm also going to reach out to Heath Malanson. There are auditors, and see what they can provide as far as services go, and get some quotes, and go from there.
I forwarded also this morning, or this afternoon, I don't know, today is kind of blending together for me. I forwarded an email that I had received from a company, and I'm not sure which one it was, but they also are consultants for the, the CARES Act as well.
That's Strategic Solutions. I think it's Capital Strategic Solutions.
Yeah, okay.
So I think it's the same company.
Okay.
Not certain, but I'll look at that and see. So, but there are.
I had gotten the email, and I, I forwarded it, well, I thought I forwarded it to say, can we put this on an agenda, please, and I actually replied as opposed to forwarded it to the company, so.
Oh, good, so maybe you'll have the information.
I have, I have a contact, anyway.
That's good.
For all it's worth, Chaz, it came to me from the selectmen, can we put it on the agenda? So you did do it right.
Okay.
And, and here's the other thing, that, that query was about ARPA funding. So what I might do is expand my request. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if ARPA will also pay for a consultant for this, because it really is a big accounting piece to keep track of that, and it's not something that's in the normal scope of a town accountant's position. This is like an added responsibility on top, and it's significant. So, I'll see what I can do going forward with that.
If we can use CARES funds to do it, because that's where we know we've got one problem, but I would absolutely recommend that would help Terry and everybody else, and this person, whoever it is, that we have a guy to make sure we're getting the proper funding.
Right, right. I think it makes sense, so, so I'll go forward and get more information, and this will be forthcoming. Meanwhile, I am investigating, and if I can submit a more recent report with the stuff, because it'll be a little while till we get a consultant on. And so, I, I'm getting closer to understanding where everything is and how the report works, so we have that.
Good.
All right, that's, that's all I have, and there's two pieces to that. There's CARES Act, and then there's ARPA, and I have to look and see if the, a consultant can also handle, you know, if the ARPA funds can also be used for an accountant. I know they can for CARES Act.
Yep.
I'm uncertain for ARPA, but I'll find out, so. All right, that's all I have on that.
Okay.
Is there a FinCon report, Andrea? Is Andrea on?
Yes.
Yes. No, not really. We, we've just been going along, looking at different things, but we've not met, and we don't have a meeting until August.
Okay.
Beginning of August.
That's good. I, I think that we should meet, Chaz and I attended an MMA seminar via Zoom on Wednesday on open meeting law and financial management, and coincidentally, I had taken the course Financial Management 101 a year ago, and Chaz, I think you had taken something recently as well.
Yeah.
The this-year version of that. And, so anyway, it was really good, and they suggested that there be joint meetings between the FinCom, the Selectmen, the School Committee. Was there anybody else on that? Those were the three that I remember.
Those are the three, they were saying, those are the major chunks of, of collaboration that really should be done well before the budget process.
Right, so I am thinking September, maybe the first Board of Selectmen meeting in September, to, or finding a time outside of Board of Selectmen time when we could all meet, and we could invite the school committee to come as well, from both schools, and both school districts, I should say. So, all right, anything else on FinCom report? No? All right, so report on interim search. I left this in there. I just want to state that we do have three resumes, three potential candidates, and I had sent out querying them. Our, our July 27th meeting, we have just an executive session. That is the only thing on the agenda, and I thought, well, it might be a good time to put the interviews right before, but it, it seems that on the 27th, I know that one of the people, and I'm not sure if I forwarded that third resume to you guys yet. I might not have. I will. It just came in last night. He had queried, he was one of the fall can, you know, the falls, but anyway, I will send that to you if I haven't. He's not available on the 27th. One of the other two candidates is only available via Zoom on the 27th. So, I, I think we need to think about whether we want to keep that date, whether we interview all three at the same time, or do separate times for the interviews?
The sooner we get interviewing, get them all done, and then we can have the committee helping us, and, and go from there.
So, well, the committee is to look at the interviews and give us their opinion. The interviews are for the select board. So, do we want, I guess my question is, do we want to interview them all three at the same time, or is it okay to interview them separately?
I would like to get them all three at the same time. I would, if I have to take a day off of work, I will.
It would be an evening, I think.
Okay.
I was thinking, I don't want to go beyond that week, so I was gonna, you know, send out possible times, and I was thinking Thursday, the 29th.
That's good with me.
Does that work for you? I think that might work for the two who couldn't do the 27th. I don't know if it works for the person who could do the 27th, and also, I don't know if we're going to interview all three of them. It depends on what the search, the advisory group, our discussion on Monday, so.
But that's fine. The 29th would be fun.
That's okay with you, too, Chaz?
Yep.
Okay, and is there a time that's best? Like, is it better to do 7:00 PM for you, Chaz, or Joe?
If it's Thursday, I'm going to change my schedule, so I, I can do from 6:00 on if you want.
Yeah, do it earlier. Do it at 6:00.
Okay, so I would do 6:00 PM on the 29th, so I'll query that, because I, I would prefer to interview not on Zoom.
Yeah.
I, I would prefer to do it in-person.
I agree.
And if I'm out of town, or whatever, I'll come back. I'll be there.
On the 29th?
Yeah, whatever, yeah. Or if, if we do another day, whatever day that we have to do it, I'll be there.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna see, I, I'm gonna post a few. I, I don't think Monday, Monday works for one, for two of the people, you know, if we were to do it on the 26th instead of the 27th, blah, blah, blah. So I'll, I'll throw out the 27th and the 29th in the evening, 6:00 PM for both. So, all right, and I know, anyway, okay, that's all I have on that. All right, pest control. The Pest Control Contract for Town Buildings.
Can I, can I speak about this first before we get into that, this pest control?
You want to speak about?
Pest control.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe we were going back to the interims, okay.
I, I'm just, I'm a little concerned and baffled right now. I, I did speak, well, I've had a couple of conversations with residents of our area that have pretty much, so, and I don't know where they're getting all the information or how they're getting it, but I only can one imagine, that they, the town clerk's office gave them my number and discussed the rat problem, that they feel that Town Hall has the rat problem, and they want to know what we, as the Board of Selectmen of the town, is going to do about the rat problem we have. I made it very clear that the Town Hall does not have a rat problem. There's a problem out in the outside that we're trying to look at, and so I reached out to the Neshoba Board of Health, the Rick Metcalf, yesterday. We had a long conversation, and he assured me that, you know, he's been around the grain store, Dunkin' Donuts, personally himself, the Ice Cream Factory, Cliffs. There's no real rat problem there. There's nothing, none of those restaurants have any kind of an issue. He's only thinking where the construction that's going on between the restaurant and our building, the habitat may have lived inside them walls and all that brush, whatever, that might create a little problem. So, he, he said that he would make sure if anyone called, or if we got any calls, to direct them to him, because he would fend them off. But now, today, he called me back this morning, because he had a, a conversation with Rob, and evidently, I'm very confused, because I was under the impression that we have Bane that's been doing it. Rob has not been happy with Bane, and that's why he reached out to us to find out, what are we going to do to try to help, and what are our solutions? Well, I thought our solution was, well, Rob, go get us some proposals. Tell us what we need to do. Well, I was told today that we have not done rat control or anything, because we have decided we're not doing any of that on the outside of the building. And I just want to make this very clear, that we have not told Rob nor anybody not to do whatever is necessary that has to be part of the baiting out in them traps. He told the Neshoba Board of Health that he was directed not to do any baiting or anything. That's not a true statement. I just want to. That's not a true statement. I just want to get that clarified.
Okay. So I have a question. Um, we, the town have had a contract with Bane. And I know that a quarterly bill came in recently, um, for, uh, the baiting of the traps from Bane. I'd have to pull it out to get the details. So I, uh, it appears to me that we have a regularly, regular quarterly contract with Bane. I don't know the extent of the contract. That's one. Number two, I haven't seen a rat yet. I haven't seen a picture of the rat. Here are the rats. I haven't. No, no, I'm serious. Um, there are not rats running over Town Hall, at least not in the building. And recently I've been in the parking lot a lot at all hours of the day, and I have yet to see a rat. That does not mean there isn't a rat problem. So I guess what evidence of rats are there? Uh, and then, um, in, in other words, what's, what's made it all of a sudden become a rat problem? And why aren't we just continuing what we're doing and looking at it? I also want to know what budget line item this is coming out of. And this kind of fits into the next two topics. All of these next 5.14 through 5.16 are all facilities topics.
Wow. For me, I, you know, I have not personally seen a rat problem, but the house that's directly behind the parking lot as you're driving in on the right, they've installed that white fence, that young lady, very pleasant, very nice, very concerned. There was a rat on her deck while the children were out playing. There was also a dead rat that was kind of chewed up by some animal in her backyard. And so these are the conversations that I've been fending off. And first of all, I am not the liaison for the Board of Health. And I made it very clear that if any more of those calls come in, they should be. I do believe, Chaz, not to throw this on you, but you, you are the liaison. But I have been told by Rick Metcalf that if any residents have concerns, they should really reach out to the Neshoba Board of Health.
I agree.
I think there's getting a little blown out of proportion. I think we as a community, we as the, the powers to be, we need to make sure that all our employees are not out discussing rat problems. We need to keep kind of, the more and more you talk about it, if it's the Town Clerk's Office, the Board of Health, anybody, the more you talk about it, the more you keep publicizing this, the bigger of a problem it's going to be. But I just want to make it very clear that nowhere in my conversation that I had with Rob nor anybody else, did I tell them not to do the bait. The way I understood it, the Maintenance Department was unhappy with Bane. They come out once a year. They have a once a year type of thing. And that's why we as a board gave him the authority to go forward, get some proposals for us to come forward, which we're gonna. And then we get into that part of the contract. I want to discuss that also. That's all I have to say.
Um, I, I am by no means any expert in this area. However, um, I did run a maintenance program for a paper company in Gardner um, that had a, a pest control, um, uh, protocol that I did develop and, and run. And I developed it with, uh, a pest company that's up in, in New Hampshire. Um, that includes inside and outside, baiting stations outside, baiting stations inside, and a, a protocol so that once a month, the, the owner of the facility or me, I had to go around and there was a, a checklist that I would use to do to see if there was, um, any indication of animals either getting into the building or, or, you know, animals in the building. I walked around Town Hall on several occasions and several different times during the day. And I have not seen any evidence that there are, uh, any pests like rats or mice coming in or out of Town Hall. Um, having said that, and again, I'm not an expert, but more importantly is that we do have a, an, a, a contract with the company. Um, that contract specifically states exactly what, you know, the, the remediation efforts of that particular organization is doing. I would like a, a vote from the board. I will call Bane. I will find out exactly what they do. I will find out. I will, I, I will talk about what their expert opinion is in regards to this particular situation, because we are under contract with them. If I find out that their contract is no longer, or they're, you know, we, we, we're not dealing with them anymore, then I personally feel we will entertain other, other agencies to come in. But for right now, we're under contract with, with, uh, with an organization. And we need to find out what, what the problem is. They need to come out and look and then tell us what we need to do. I'm all for getting this taken care of as quickly as possible. But it's not, you know, you, you, you don't, you, it, it's almost like, you know, the, the, we're trying to get control of what's going on and the information that we're getting, you know, it, we don't have any information to be able to act upon. So i- i- if I ask the board, if you could please allow me to, uh, have a conversation with Bane, I will get the, the, the scoop from them as quickly as I possibly can so that I can report on Monday so that we have a course of action.
Make a motion that we allow Chaz to do exactly what he said. Reach out, find out where we stand with Bane, and then we can move forward. If we are out of contract, then I know there were a couple proposals came in. Then let's discuss how we move forward from there.
Okay, I will second that motion. Um, that seems like a reasonable solution to me, you know, to get us moving forward. So, um, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cow, yes. All right. So I will put this, um, uh, I've already posted for Monday and I only have that one thing. Can I put it on Tuesday? I'm posting it Tuesday this afternoon.
Yep.
That's fine.
Um, so Tuesday, July 20th, Pest Management. All right. Um, I'll add that to it, the agenda.
Is Rob on with us at all, Ben, in case that we can ask him any of these questions either? Is Rob here?
I don't see him.
I don't see him. But sometimes these squares have people in them and they don't light up, and I don't know why. Okay. Um, all right. No, I don't see him. So, all right. Uh, next was the, discuss the solution to weeds at the library. This was another thing that came in from facilities. It was a, a, a question from Rob. Um, did everybody see that? I thought I put the mail in the SharePoint.
The last conversation I had just the other day, as I was walking out of the building, he did mention about some of these concerns. And that's okay. I'll listen. And, uh, my understanding that the landscape contract, that is part of what they do, and they had that on the agenda to kind of go over and take care of it. That's the way I understood it.
Okay, excuse me. Does someone want to go on SharePoint now?
No, Hartley, we're, we're talking. We're good.
Okay. Okay, thank you. There's already SharePoint. I want.
We'll let you know. Go ahead.
So that was, and that was just the other day. So he, I thought he was happy. If there's something different, I think you would find that out, Chaz, more than me, because I am not that person. But if somebody has a question, they want to ask me a question, I'm more than happy to listen. But the, uh, impression I was under is the owner, Chaz, I think his name was, or Chad, from the landscape company said that that was on the agenda and they were going to take care of it.
I'm, I'm confused.
The weeds you're talking about, Joe?
Weeds, yeah, weeds. Remember exactly what he said. He said he got a phone call. I mean, can we call Rob and ask him? Someone want to just run that if we're going to talk about weeds?
Okay. The weeds are on here. Stacy, I removed some weeds in front of the library during roof repairs last week. The weeds had some sort of sharp thorns. The BOS has chosen and instructed the Facilities Department to use organic treatments around the Library Senior Center. Um, we asked that organic treatments be used. That is correct. That was a question that was put on the Board of Selectmen agenda in the spring. I can ask CBF Land Works to remove weeds and/or what additional cost? If the weeds are cut back, then they'll return again. If they're dug out, it might kill the healthy shrub next to it by disturbing the roots. I can use weed killer. Any input, I can forward information to CBF.
Now, this is, this is again, part of what we were talking about before is that as liaison, I'm going to speak as a liaison. That information needs to come through me as opposed to being told to either one of you two. So I will have a conversation with the facilities and say that they need to come with me. I am looking into it. Um, I have, uh, uh, information that I have, um, talked with, um, with Cemetery and Parks. Um, and that organic weed control for the library is a simple solution of vinegar and dish soap. Um, that is what we use to keep the weeds out of the rocks. Um, and, uh, Roger has said that, um, the Facilities Department can borrow the sprayer if they don't have one um, to be able to control the weeds. So I don't think this is something that our landscaper needs to do. I think it's something that, um, is, is we need to deal with it in-house.
Well, my question is, I just want to make it very clear because we said that we wanted to protect the well-being in the soil, our drinking water by going organic. That doesn't put a weed problem on the Board of Selectmen.
That is correct.
I, I think, you know what I mean? I just need to make that very clear. We're doing the organic to protect the well-being of the community, the health of the drinking water. So if there's an issue that the organic fertilizer, if that's the case, isn't doing the job, well, I, I, I think the organic fertilizers for the lawns, I don't think I ever heard anything about any special shrubs or anything else. So I, I think we need to get very clear as to exactly where we're going.
The issue didn't need to be on our agenda, to be quite honest.
All right. Well, I put it on the agenda because it came forward.
No, I understand that. But I'm saying this is something that needs to come to the liaison of whoever is working with that. And between the liaison, i- if the action is not to that, um, to the liking, then we can bring it forward to the board. But not, I mean, this, eh, this is really not a very good use of my time.
Okay. So, um, Chaz, you will discuss with, uh, when you discuss the pest management.
Correct.
Um, you'll discuss with Rob. All right. And I will mention at the next Department Head meeting, I think that, uh, the importance to use your liaisons.
Well, I think it is, Madam Chair, because I don't, I don't want to be talking to somebody that is under your power. I mean, I'll be, by all means, all three of us, they, they'll stop us. People will ask us questions. That's okay. And that's our job to listen. But not our job to make a decision. It's up to the liaison to bring that forward.
Okay. All right. I will agree with that. Um, so that, moving on to, um, 5.1.6, uh, discuss the landscaping contract with CBF Landscaping for FY22. Um, I did have a discussion with the accountants about this. This contract is for, I believe, $28,000. I wanted to see what the time period was, like when we originally contracted them. Was it one of these that gets renewed every year for a three-year period? Or is this one that, um, that, uh, has to be re-upped? And the, I don't have a for certain, but a look in the file shows that this, this, it's a, it was through this year, not through FY22. And because of the amount, there have to be three quotes, and we only received one. So, um, I guess, um, this could be something that we can move on to the July 20th agenda. Chaz, does that give you enough time to do all of this? So let's bring it forward to that, if everybody's good with that. All right. Because this, this again is a procurement thing, and we don't want to, um, this is not a negative on CBF Landscaping by any means.
Oh, no.
It does that, we have to make sure that we have followed the correct process.
Correct.
The other thing I would like to know is, in the facilities, um, expenses line items, I would like, and I, um, I would like Rob to look at his expenses line items and let us know what comes out of each of those lines. Like where is CBF Landscaping or any landscaping com- company coming from? What line item is the pest control coming from? Um, those, that is unclear to me. And I know if you look at last year's agenda, not agenda, last year's, um, uh, budget, and, and you look at the expenditures reports, the numbers don't quite match up. It is, it is unclear to me where things fit.
Okay.
Um, so I, I would just like a more definite on that.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, I agree with you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chaz. All right. So that's that. Um, moving on to 5.1.7, um, acceptance of the Mass Cultural Council grant funds and authorization of signatories. On that, this, this, uh, apparently, um, in March, you typically accept your, um, funding from Mass Cultural Council. And, um, we are in need of accepting the funding. So let me go to work session, bring up the Mass Cultural Council. There were four, um, things there. There's the Townsend Letter that we received in February, the Townsend Contract, which needs to be signed. Typically, it's signed by the Town Administrator. Um, then there's the Scope of Services and the, uh, Signatory Form. And that's the one that I'm gonna, uh, bring up right now. This is the preview thing. Okay, never mind. I'm not going to do that. Um, but I will say that we need to designate our signatories. So I was going to call her. I guess what I want is a motion for, um, either for the Board of Selectmen or the Treasurer to be able to sign for these funds. If it will take longer for the state to okay the three of us, uh, signatories, then, um, Jared is already a signatory for the town, and he could sign for the receipt of the funds.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we sign the acceptance of Mass Cultural Council grant funds, um, and authorization for the Town Treasurer to sign for the, uh, Town Administrator.
Okay. I want. All right. Um, I do need to check and make sure that I think that by charter, it's either the Board of Selectmen or the Town Administrator. But when something like this comes in, it would be good to have someone else, and it looks like you can assign someone else.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Awesome. Okay.
All right. I will find out and we will get our funds. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cow, yes. All right. So that's that. All right. Any reports from board liaisons?
Well, Madam Chair, I just, a little report, fire department. I know we had the paperwork that we're all talking about where some of the funding, I, I did reach out to the, uh, Finance Committee. I did reach out to the Fire Chief, just have some conversations as to the, the way that all the funding went down with the, uh, the, uh, not overtime, but for the, uh, emergency repairs that we were all questioning. Uh, everything at this point has been done in order. Um, I just think it's something we just pay more attention to, help the Fire Department or help FinCom, just make sure we all make the right decisions. But all the funding that was used on the emergency funding, uh, were appropriated properly.
All right. Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I did attend the Conservation Commission meeting on Wednesday. They did meet. So that's the only
Good news.
Report I have from the board, uh, as a liaison. All right.
And I also, that if you, you decided you, you met at the conservation agent, you liaison, you went to that. Can we have any kind of discussion at all, or is that going to be something so different? And the reason I'm asking is just, I'm under the impression by the emails that I've seen that the Conservation Commission has directed TCAM to not uh, post or put any of their meetings up for the public to see. So I don't know where that was. So I don't know where that would come in. Where do we talk about that?
Good question. I think I'd have to look at open meeting law. I, I know the TCAM recorded the meeting. They, they filmed the meeting on Wednesday. They were there. It wasn't a Zoom meeting. And that's okay, you don't have to have Zoom meetings right now. You're just allowed to have them, you know, so that more people can participate. The meeting is held in person at town hall.
But the question I'm asking, Madam Chair, is, I, I read an email. That was sent back from Dave, that they got a direct order from the Conservation Commission agent. That they are not to.
Wait, 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 we don't have an agent yet. You mean the chair?
Chair, sorry. That they are not to post any of the conservation agents on, on broadcast on channel nine, nor put them up on YouTube. So I, I'm just concerned that why are we not allowing those meetings to be watched on channel nine, broadcasted? Or being put on YouTube? So I'm just asking that question, maybe this isn't the proper place. But when I see an email come through like that, that someone's made a decision like that, I want to know.
I'd have to look at open meeting law to see if there's a requirement to do that and to see who makes the decision. On what gets posted in a town or, or not posted, as the case may be. I don't know that open meeting law goes that far. I, I believe that it's more a town policy, so perhaps we need a town policy on. You know, recordings. You know, being posted on the town YouTube channel for boards and committees.
All right, well, just ask that, Madam Chair, that's fine.
Chaz, do you have any further insight into this and open meeting law?
I'm choosing not to really enter into the conversation only because that would be something that we'd be probably dealing with. On the August 3rd hearing that we have coming up.
Okay, well, let's drop it. I mean, I can see. Yeah, because I, I don't really know the direct answer on that.
And I didn't have it either, but I read the emails that were going around and I just wanted to ask that question.
Okay, you're welcome. I mean, I guess as liaison, I could ask, but.
We got a meeting coming up.
All right. Anything else from liaisons? All right, I'm going to go to then. The communications. I think that's under work session, announcements and communications. The MMA dues are due for the Board of Selectmen. And I didn't write down the amount. Did anybody write down the amount?
I don't have the exact one, though. I can find it, though.
Tell me how to do preview, how to do the preview thing.
Right-click on it and then open in browser.
It's taking too long. Let me try again. Right-click on it. All right. All right, the dues are $1,242. And this comes out of the membership and dues lines. So I guess I just want a vote to, I don't know that we really need this, a vote on this, but. Let's do that anyway.
Madam Chair, I move that we pay the dues for MMA in the amount of $1,242.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. All right, so moving on, that's all I have for announcements or communications. All right. I, I guess then our next meetings will be July 19th at noon. The only thing at that, on that is a review of the. Of the. Resumes and cover letters for the candidates that we have. I'm going to kind of run that as a charrette with the people that are there. So that people can look at it individually or the, where there are two people in a group. And that we can, and I'll have questions for discussion and we can add questions to that. As we go on, so that, that's the plan. And then July 20th, we have our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. I will be posting that this afternoon. And then I've kept the July 23rd at noon meeting. I, I don't know if we'll need it that or not. It depends on whether or not we have things settled for. Interim interviews. So, or what comes up during the week, because. That's where we are.
The interim interviews during that day, I'll drive back and I'll be there.
Okay, all right, so we have an executive session. Do I have a motion?
Before the motion, just a quick question, if I may. We, we had already agreed to sign Bill's payable warrants out of session last meeting we had, correct?
That is correct.
So we don't need to do that for this one?
No, we did it for the week of July 12th, what's the other mention was.
Right, okay. Then I move that we enter into an executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 30A. Section 21A4 to discuss the development of security personnel or equipment or strategies with respect thereto. In regards to the town buildings, phone systems and computers, and then not to return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. Thank you.